Presiding over this special session today. So I now call the special meeting of the Twin Cities Faculty Delegation to order. Before I start, I just want to note that this meeting was called according to the rules when 10% of the faculty senators requested a special meeting. Uh, once that is done, there is no discretion on the part of the FCC, the administration, or any governance body as to whether or not to call this meeting. So the meeting had to happen once that threshold was reached. I also want to point out that Robert's rules do allow for reconsideration of uh, past votes as long as they are at a separate meeting from the one in which they were originally considered. It gets more complicated if uh, if it's done at the same meeting where the vote originally happened. So you know, as far as I can tell from my colleagues who are more expert in this matter, there is absolutely nothing illegitimate about this meeting to discuss what to do with the general education requirements at the University of Minnesota. So with that, uh, our first agenda item is a general discussion about updating the core curriculum. I will call on Professor Jim Cottner to speak to the reasons behind his request and their request for this special session. So Professor Cottner, the floor is yours.
Okay, thanks Perry. Um. My name is Jim Cottner. I'm a professor in ecology, evolution, and behavior and a CBS Senator. First, many thanks for the opportunity to speak about this important issue this morning. And a special thanks to those who are willing to help me call for this special session. I know this is not a great time to be doing this, given all the things that pile up at the end of the semester. But I felt like this was too important of an issue to let it die. I have seven key points I would like for all of us to consider before we vote on this matter. Point number one, the procedure for our previous vote was flawed. One college was allowed to present their perspective on the curriculum plan, and no additional time for discussion was given. This struck me as unfair. People that know me know that I have a strong sense of right and wrong, and this seemed to me like something I wanted to try to fix. And that is why I have pushed for reconsideration of the core curriculum. Many have argued recently that what we are doing is flawed today. I can assure you that nothing we are doing is not allowed in our bylaws or by Robert's rules. It is our right as senators to request a special session to address a previous vote, as Perry already mentioned. In addition, I did not feel that what was said regarding the CLA faculty meeting prior to our faculty senate meeting faithfully characterized the materials that were presented in the docket prior to the meeting. Two things stand out to me. First, the vote taken was fifty-four to thirty-five percent with four abstentions. This was presented as a deeply divided vote. I can't imagine that anyone would interpret a similar vote in our nation's contentious political situation as deeply divided. The CLA representative representative also spent one minute of time discussing the positive aspects of the core curriculum. All seven were devoted to its problems. Again, in my view, not a fair representation of what was presented at their faculty meeting. Lastly, CLA's five minutes of rebuttal were not even on the agenda for the faculty senate meeting. So the rest of the faculty did not know that one college would have time while no other colleges would. I don't know why this was the case, but it certainly seemed misleading and unfair to me. Some have indicated to me that having a biased perspective presented right before a vote wouldn't have made any difference. Even that it would be ludicrous to suggest that it would. But my response to this is that it was the equivalent of someone handing you politically motivated materials as you're walking into a voting booth. Currently, and I hope forever, this is illegal in the U.S. Did what occurred before the vote change anything? I honestly don't know, but I also don't know how anybody could know. We can and should pass this. A lot of the resistance has been due to concerns about finances. As a faculty member whose primary focus is on teaching and doing research, this is not my primary concern. But rather, this is what the administration should be focused on. It should be noted that the deans of every college have stated that if this new plan is passed, they will ensure that they do their best to implement it, which suggests to me that any financial concerns can and will be dealt with. I asked our dean about the proposed new curriculum since CBS could lose revenue due to a decrease in biology requirements, and she could not have been more positive. Yes, there will be challenges, but in CBS, we are ready to embrace it. Lastly, the reason I'm embroiled in this situation is because of only one thing. I think this is a better way forward for our students. I have had no agenda other than what I think they need. I was the director of undergraduate studies in my department for well over a decade and have been a champion for student interests then and still. If I thought what happened when we voted previously was fair, I would have accepted defeat and gone on with my life because I really have no skin in the game. This vote will not affect what I teach or how I teach, nor is it likely to affect how many students are in my classes. But if it does, I am confident I can deal with it. My motive, my motivation is simply that I think this is a better way forward for our students. I guess I do have a tiny bit of skin in the game in that both of my kids have gone to school here. One will graduate this coming weekend. Both of them and all the students working in my laboratory and many in my classes have told me that the current LE system is not working for them for all the reasons that have been discussed in our previous meetings. A disconnected checklist that most of them see little to no purpose in. I differ in that I certainly do see some purpose to both of these plans. But I also just feel like the new plan gives them more agency to design a path forward in their own education. Furthermore, it emphasizes interdisciplinarity, something that is extremely important to the research I do in aquatic sciences, but increasingly a critical component in all fields. The world is so interconnected, and those who can navigate it and work in teams will have an incredible advantage. Your vote on this issue may be motivated by other things. But keep in mind that front and center in our mission statement is to enlighten and to educate our students. With that in mind, I think this is a step in the right direction and that we should vote to pass it. We should first commit to giving our students a refreshed curriculum by fall 2027. To help us think about that, I yield the rest of my time to our colleague, Tim Johnson.
Thanks, Jim. I really appreciate that, and I appreciate everyone being at the meeting today, as Jim said, this time of uh, time of the year. Um, and I just want to give some full context as to um, the importance of centering students and student learning and consideration of the new proposed curriculum. The motion before us that I'll make here as quickly as I can allows us to step back um, from considering the, the proposed core curriculum, uh, 2025 proposal specifically. Um, and rather to have us address the broader question of whether the faculty senate sees a need for revised general education curriculum. Now note that this is not a new issue for us and not just in the last three years that the LE committee has been doing this. Back in 2016 and 2017, Provost Hanson asked the faculty to consider this issue and created the LE pre-planning group, which hosted campus-wide forums to gather faculty views on liberal education. Now, the consensus then was that we should actually make a change and that it was a good idea to revise our curriculum. The momentum did carry forward into the LE redesign committee, which came before the senate in 2019, just before the COVID academic, and there were two proposed models that were not adopted by the faculty senate at the time. And a significant reason, as I read that history, is that change wasn't needed at the time, not that change wasn't needed, but rather that the changes were not significantly different enough from the current curriculum to make it worthwhile for the change. In addition, please remember that the 2019 committee was criticized for not consulting sufficiently with all interested parties on campus. And now we have the current committee run by Catherine Pearson in the Political Science Department, and it's put forward its proposal that it took over three years of deep discussion, consultation, and revision that included input from every college, from individual faculty, and from my perspective, um, most importantly, from students across the entire university. And the outcome that, that they came up with reflects what I also think is a very exciting new way for our students to engage with their general education. And note that we are actually at Minnesota in very good company for revising our curriculum at this time, as many, if not most of our peer institutions in the Big Ten have begun uh, to change their curricula or are in the process of doing so. Maryland implemented a new curriculum in 2012 and has plans to revision every 20 years, so they're coming relatively close to that. Indiana implemented a new curriculum in 2011 and is now working on a new one. Nebraska implemented a plan in 2009, Penn State in 2018, and Ohio State in 2022. It's been nine years now since we, the faculty at the university, along with the administration and other interested parties, decided that updating the liberal education curriculum was a worthy endeavor for our students to make their education better at the University of Minnesota. We've had so many discussions over the past eight to nine years, and now is the time to commit to a new curriculum for students who enter the university just two short years from now in the fall of 2027. If there are still any questions about the need for change, I really do encourage you to review letters and comments submitted from advising, from students, and from uh, student service professionals who know best how students experience the liberal education as a whole. As Jim said, I believe that now is the time to commit to change, and so I propose the following motion. To establish revised general education requirements to take effect for the undergraduate class incoming in the fall of 2027. Thank you all very much.
Great. Thank you, Professors Johnson and Kostner. Uh, we will now have a discussion on the motion to establish revised general education requirements. We will utilize the pro-con debate format. Remember, please, that pro means we will reconsider or we will establish revised general education requirements. Con means we will not establish revised general education requirements. Uh, if you have a question or comment, please raise your hand and send a Zoom chat to Amber Bathke indicating whether you are in favor of the resolution or against it. Speakers who have not yet spoken will be prioritized over speakers who have already spoken, including yielding time to non-senators. Amber, please call on the first speaker.
All right, um, first up, we have Carrie Rysik. Uh, may I ask a senator to yield time?
Yield my time.
Good morning, everyone. As Executive Director of the Office of Undergraduate Admissions, I can confidently say that we need a new, fresh approach to help students understand what a diploma from the University of Minnesota would mean to them. In a world questioning the value of a college degree and focused on trades and direct line of jobs out of high school, we need to be able to point to real-world skills they will receive from a degree from the university. For context, undergraduate recruitment of top students is hyper-competitive, both at the national and global collegiate levels, which requires a point of distinction of our educational product. National student recruitment is an increasingly critical audience for us as a number of high school graduates in Minnesota and surrounding states will be lower in the coming years. Being quickly able to communicate a compelling, unique curriculum, that's part of what all students experience regardless of major, is critical to our ever-increasing recruitment challenges. Students and families want to know what's special or different about a school to justify their investment. Establishing this modern core curriculum designed to meet evolving workforce needs will help the U of M stand apart and be understood quickly by the public. To summarize, the proposed core curriculum will help us recruit and enroll top students nationally and globally. This is something that we all need to be able to communicate and continue to thrive as a university and graduate world-class scholars who will go on to be successful leaders in all industries. Voting yes is a vote to continue building our reputation as a sought-after degree, providing critical value for the investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Amber, next question, your next person, please.
Uh, next up is Nathaniel Mills.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Nathaniel Mills, I'm the senator in CLA. Um, I wanted to speak to the auspices under which the special meeting has been called. Um, me and several other CLA senators are quite concerned about the allegations that Professor Shank, the Chair of the CLA Assembly, somehow misrepresented CLA opinion, somehow illegitimately swayed um, the vote on the third, and so I wanted to kind of respond to some of those, um, some of those claims. First, I'll point out that it is a beggar's belief that after multiple semesters of discussing the Common Core and lengthy presentations from the committee and supporters of the Common Core, that Professor Shank was able in five minutes to somehow um, illegitimately sway the vote. I mean, if he has that kind of power, I'm impressed. Uh, I, I don't think he does. However, the other kind of problem here with the claims about how this being, um, you know, kind of a cause for, uh, re-meeting and revoting is that a lot of the allegations made against Professor Shank simply just don't hold up. Um, CLA Assembly did ask for time from the FCC.
With all due respect, uh, let's, I would like to keep the debate focused on the motion and not on what happened in the past and not on any discussion of individuals. We have a lot of people.
Move, move for a ruling from the chair on the.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you now.
I believe how procedure goes is that like, if you're, if you're making that ruling, then I think I would ask, I, I would be able to ask for a second in order to have a vote on it, but I would need clarification.
Uh, you're more than welcome to, to speak to the motion. Are you appealing the ruling from the chair?
Yes.
I second.
All right, so I'll need to consult with the parliamentarian on this.
I'd just like to note that allegations were made of another faculty member in that opening statement, and he was not offered an opportunity to respond.
And I have a point of order question, which is are faculty senators in general allowed to respond to the opening statements? Um, there was quite a bit of time at the beginning of the meeting taking up with those opening statements, and it framed the entire discussion. And this is exactly the parallel issue that's being claimed about what JB Shank's comments did at the prior meeting. That is to say, things were simply put forward to frame the entire discussion that will no doubt influence the discussion in the vote, and were designed to do so, and now people are being told that they can't respond to those. So that's a point of order. Is that actually allowed? I don't know. I'm not a parliamentarian. But it's a good faith question asked with good intent.
I also have a point of order question, um, which I think takes priority, which is that, you know, twelve of the twenty minutes um, devoted to this discussion were taken up with pro presentations. And now, um, we're left with only eight minutes of discussion, which is being taken up by people trying to silence people who are speaking against the motion. So I think we need to have more time, and I'm not sure any more pro um, comments should be taken since more than half the time was already devoted to pro discussion.
Uh, the, the discussion will continue with the pro-con format. The people who get to call the meeting have the right to speak. Uh, Professor Mills, you can continue. I will, uh, I will say that there were allegations made, and there have been allegations made in all the emails that have been floating around too. I'd like to focus the discussion on whether we should establish revised general education requirements for the core curriculum and not just on, you know, what people said about other people.
Point of order. I would like Professor, I would like Professor Mills to have an additional 20 seconds as Professor Leo, when you, um, called to.
I just told him that he could continue, yes.
Uh, but I'm asking for a point of order for an additional 20 seconds on his time. Thank you.
That's fine.
Thank you. Um, I am speaking to the motion because I believe we voted on whether or not we should have a new core curriculum on the third. Um, and the reason that we are meeting again to reconsider the issue is based on allegations about the CLA Assembly presentation um, that are at best disputable. Um, Professor Shank provided the correct vote count from the CLA Assembly discussion or uh, a vote on the whether or not to approve the Common Core. Other colleges, to my extent, to my knowledge, did not request to present at the 4-3 meeting. CLA did. Um, he misestimated the percentages of that vote by about four or five percentage points either way, but the vote tallies were correct. And he also provided additional information to speak to the faculty in CLA's perspective. CLA Assembly is not a faculty representative body. It contains only 60% faculty, um, on the committee. It has administrators and students and other voices as well. So in order to supplement the vote count with information about how the CLA faculty feel, um, he provided testimonials from faculty, and as you can see, uh, most of them were negative. Um, fifteen or sixteen senators signed the call for this special session, only two of whom were in CLA. Thirty senators sent the email yesterday opposed to it, and fifteen of those senators are in CLA. So I don't think Professor Shank misrepresented.
Amber, please call the next person.
Next is Karen Ho, who has a neutral comment.
Um, yes, um, first I want to say that a clarification point, there's been no concrete evidence given to the faculty that liberal education requirements are even a key factor in any young adults use to select an institution. I don't know about you all, but in my conversations with young adults, size, location, cost, reputation, ranking, all come up, even sports teams, um, but certainly not lib ed requirements. Um, we talk about the demographic cliff, but whereas small liberal arts colleges might be really severely affected, a lot of R1 institutions are getting record applications and enrollment. In fact, the University of Minnesota, uh, Twin Cities has record applications, forty-three K this year, forty-one K last year, record enrollments four years in a row, all under the current lib ed requirements. Right? So I, I think we really sort of need to mobilize actual evidence here, um, and I see the rest of my time on the mic.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, when you propose a new curriculum, it needs a strong consensus of faculty support. We need buy-in, intellectual engagement, and passion, but we are not there. Two weeks ago, the Provost scolded and threatened faculty senate members for voting against the proposal. And now we're being asked in three different ways to keep this process alive and expedite its implementation. But the proposal was already voted on. The proposal and the process, as we can see right now, is falling off the rails. Many faculty are furious at the level of disrespect conveyed to their honest deliberations. After all, when senior leadership does not like a vote outcome, is it appropriate for those in power to pressure senators into revoting? We're undermining the integrity of our processes, and we're doing the designers of the curriculum no favors by trying to pass it under duress. People have to want to teach this curriculum. It needs buy-in, and the concerns are legitimate. Many of us also believe the existing LE is balanced, rigorous, and when it comes to the risk of external complaints, our existing LE is unimpeachable. For these reasons, I ask that we vote all three motions down and reclaim our summer and our free time from one has been a very difficult year.
Amber, please call the next person.
Okay, um, I'm going to prioritize a student speaker, um, and that would be, um, Rama Ali.
Hi, can I please request time from a senator, please?
I would yield time.
Thank you. Um, thank you to faculty, staff, and students for your time here today and allowing us to share our support for the Core Curriculum 2025 Proposal. My name is Rahima Ali. I am the 2024-2025 Student Body President through the Undergraduate Student Government. It was my freshman year, um, the first time the core curriculum was formally proposed to our faculty, staff, and students. And the committee then during President Gable's tenure came to one of our undergraduate student government forums to answer questions and ask for feedback. And now that I'm here as a graduate senior sharing support for the curriculum proposal. Um, thank you to the Sears Committee, Dr. Raj Singh, and Co-Cher, Dr. Catherine Pearson, for coming to one of our forums um, this year to rediscuss and keep us in the loop with such an important proposal and answering all of our questions that we had during that time. The foundation, the focus areas, perspectives, and writing intensive of the core curriculum aim to give students a connected and overall meaningful education experience as undergraduate students. We are here to support all of that. With this kind of change that has not been able to be made in over thirty years, um, it will greatly impact our liberal education and the kind of education and engagement students need in today's world to be able to thrive in life, academics, work, and civic engagement, as that is a very, very crucial learning experience that we need. These core curriculum areas focus on, for example, the perspectives on global race, power, and justice in the U.S., equity, environment, civic life, and well-being. All allow students to explore, understand, and apply the, the complexities of the social and political factors shaping our world today. At one point during that committee presentation at one of our forums, I was very, very um, impressed with the detailing of the curriculum and wanted to consider picking up another major and staying for another four years. Obviously, that's not possible. I urge you all to support this curriculum, and thank you all for your time.
Amber, please call the next person.
All right, next on my list is, um, Julia Luhan, who is con.
Thank you, Amber. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and thank you, um, Rahima for speaking up. Um, I have two biggest concerns. One is the process in which this meeting has been called. I think it breaks all process and due process, and it takes away the responsibilities, freedoms, and guarantees that we have as a, as a body. Coming from a home country that has gone through cycles of abuse of power cyclically, this is extremely disturbing. I would never think that an institution like ours would find ourselves in a situation like this. My second concern, and I'm glad I'm speaking right after Rahima, is about the, um, the, the student's response. And I tried to speak up in our last meeting when this was voted on, and I was cut short. In fact, I was not even allowed to speak about this. Um, I understand that the graduate student body, uh, of the senate is supportive of the but I did my own research. Um, and I had continued to talk to forty-six of my students. I teach Spanish at the beginner level. Um, I have students from all majors that within CLA. Uh, I'm two from freshmen up to seniors. Um, and none of them had heard about this proposal. And none of them were in favor of this proposal once I presented the information, and I presented the information that was presented to us in the slides. Um, so to me, figuring out who is this student body that is supportive of this, of these motions or these core proposals is key. I do not think that there's, there is a wide representation of student voices. If we can extrapolate that none of my forty-six students were aware of this happening, my students coming from all majors and all years of, um, education. Thank you.
Great. Tim, would you like to respond?
Yeah, I just want to make two quick points in response. Um, one is um, the idea that th- this committee was not representative or didn't get a representative sample of the students um, is absolutely not accurate. Um, working with the, the student senate, uh, and student leadership absolutely is where the representation, which is what we live in, a representative democracy here at the U, um, is a strong representation of the student body, and we all need to know this is about the students, the students, the students, and not about us. This is.
Can I answer back?
And, and then my second point is, it is really disconcerting to me, and it is also really, uh, what, what's the word for it? Almost repugnant to say that anybody who is supporting this and this meeting was pressured by the administration. We are all faculty. We all want what is best for the students. And to say that we were pressured by anybody, and nobody has talked to me about this, except myself and Jim Cottner, um, is not an argument that should be made and is not a reason not to do what is right for the students. Thank you.
Can I answer back? Because I did not say that. Can I answer back? Because I did not say that.
No, no, I think we have to keep going. This is not a debate. At this point, I'd like to, if anybody has a motion to extend the discussion.
Wait, point of order. You let, you let a pro person respond and now you're shutting down a con person. And this is happening over and over again.
I am. If you want to have a vote, have a vote.
Totally unethical.
It's not unethical. We have to keep the process moving.
But I was misrepresented in his, in his comment. My voice was not fairly represented in his.
All right, all right, fine. If you want to respond, please respond.
Excellent. That's exactly right.
I did not say that the administration pressured me in particular. So please take that comment back. That was not a response to my comment. And secondly, when, uh, we had asked and I personally asked for information about the students' feedback, all this, all the feedback I received in these meetings was positive. I never got any hard data on who has been reached out. I did not hear any student complaining or having criticism about this proposal, which makes me very doubtful that every single student has been consulted on this, has been in favor of these proposals. So if, if, as, as I take your word, uh, Dr. Johnson, that you are, um, that, that the student body at large was, um, hmm, reached out and asked for feedback, then I would like to see a lot more hard data than what we have seen before, where every comment has been a positive comment on these proposals. Again, 46 of my students, one of whom is a university senator, um, student senator didn't know about this.
All right. At, at this point, I'd like to see if anyone has a motion to extend time for the discussion.
I would like to make a motion to vote on this motion. Call the question.
Okay, uh, Nancy.
Second.
I'm gonna ask my parliamentarian what the.
Yep, that's, I know, it's been moved and seconded.
Has it been seconded?
Yeah. I seconded it.
Okay. All right, uh, then I think, do we have discussion or do we just call the question?
Don't we just vote now?
It's debatable. Okay. Amber, could you prepare the poll, please?
Uh, yep, here it comes. Sorry, sorry that I got the wrong motion. Sorry, I'm gonna start over with the right one.
Do we have to vote on calling the question? That seems weird.
I don't.
Yes, okay. Amber, we have to vote on calling the question.
We do? Okay.
That's what I'm getting, yep.
Oh, okay. All right. So then I do need to prepare one, um, very quickly. Okay. Um, now here we go, calling the question. 10 more seconds if you wish to vote. And last call. With 80s and 24 nays that motion carries. So now Nancy, do I go to the meeting?
Now you call the, call the motion, call the question for motion one.
All right.
Please read the motion.
Uh, motion one, to establish revised general education requirements to take effect for the undergraduate class incoming in fall 2027. Can, can I just point out that this is, this is not?
No, you cannot point out anything. There's a vote.
I'm going to point out that this is a vote for senators only. Some people have been chatting me that everyone can see the poll and that is true. So please, if you're not a voting member at this meeting, if you're not an alternate for a voting person, uh, please don't vote. Here we go. 10 more seconds if you wish to vote. And last call. With 38 ayes and 67 nays, that motion does not carry.
Okay, since that motion does not carry, uh, I think that the meeting will be adjourned because there's no point in going to the, the question of what we do next. So thank you, everyone, for your time.
Question, I'm sorry, question. What does that mean? So there's just no action, the previous vote stands? I think you need to explain to us exactly what that means about the previous vote.
Yes, the previous vote stands, the, the, the body has decided not to continue to look into revised general education requirements. So the previous vote, the, turning down the core curriculum 2025, it stands and there will be, you know, no future action, at least that I know of, on, or from the faculty senate on, on the core curriculum or general education requirements.
Thank you for that clarification. I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Thank you, Perry. Have a good day.
Thanks, Tim. Yep, you too.